Oh shoot, is that here? All right, we'll get started hopefully she can. Do you want to wait a couple minutes? And then wait for the ordinance for that?
Yeah.
We could do that. Okay. So, good evening. I'm going to first start our regular Borough Council voting session right now, but we're going to take a brief recess in the middle to do a public hearing. So, the time right now is 6:31. I'm calling it to order. And we're going to start with our pledge of allegiance first. Can I have that led by Mr. McCoy? Okay, thank you very much. Before we get into our full agenda, I'm going to briefly allow Mayor D. Baptiste to introduce our new hires for our police department.
Thank you for that, President Stefano. We have four sworn new officers of the Westchester Police Department, and I will call their names and ask that they come forward. Our first is Officer Douglas Gilbert, badge number 171. He comes to the Westchester Police from the Philadelphia Police Department where he was a full-time officer. He's a graduate of Westchester University with a degree in criminal justice. The second is Officer Luis Lopez Torres, badge number 172. He comes to the Westchester Police from working part-time at the Kennet Square Borough Police Department where he was a part-time officer. I just said that. Graduate of Penn State University where he double majored in criminology and international politics. Our third officer is Officer Ryan McMillan, badge number 173. He comes to Westchester Police from the Kennet Square Borough Police Department where he was a part-time officer as well. He also is a graduate of Westchester University with a degree in criminal justice. There's a theme. And our last, but certainly not least, Officer Cara Dockerty, badge number 174, a resident of Westtown Township, graduate of Westchester University with a degree in criminal justice. Yes. Welcome our new officers.
Congratulations.
Thanks so much.
Congratulations. All right. Thank you very much and congratulations to our new hires. It's really exciting. A lot of promise there, so thank you. All right. I'm going to suspend our regular voting session and go back and open a hearing, public hearing, on an ordinance of the Borough of Westchester, Chester County, Pennsylvania, amending the Borough of Westchester Stormwater Management Ordinance, which was adopted on December 18th, 2013, as ordinance number 18DS2013, and is codified in Chapter 94 of the Borough of Westchester Code and adopting amendments required by the 2022 Chester County Model Act 167 Stormwater Management Ordinance. Ms. Camp.
Time?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening. This ordinance is being brought to you from the county. Chester County Water Resources Authority took the lead to amend the countywide stormwater management ordinance. They first adopted a countywide ordinance in 2013, and then all the municipalities within Chester County in order to be in compliance with the statewide, what's called Act 167, which is the Stormwater Management Act. Every municipality was required to adopt the county model. The Borough did that on December 18th, 2013, and you have been administering that as development projects come forward. You, in 2013, did have opportunity to make some change, to make choices. There were some, not everything was mandated. You got to choose at what level of impervious cover your ordinance kicked in. And you chose anything over 500 square feet of impervious cover and anything over 2,500 square feet of earth disturbance was where you started to require stormwater management. 1,000 square feet to 2,000 square feet, you allowed what's called a simplified approach. And anything over 2,000 square feet required a fully engineered plan for stormwater management. The state law changed and had some updates, and the county took it upon themselves, again, the Water Resources Authority took it upon themselves to modify the 2013 model ordinance and adopted a 2022 Act 167 model ordinance. The county commissioners adopted that new model ordinance on August 17th, 2022, as part of Resolution 55 of '22. And the Water Resources Authority has been assisting municipalities to push out the model ordinance. They did a really nice job of explaining what changes are mandatory and where you have some discretion. We worked with Will Williams, Kevin Gore, and Panoni, Nate Klein's office, and basically kept it the way, the choices that were made in 2013 basically stayed the same. Things that you were mandated to make, we made those changes. The most significant change where we did have discussion was the new model ordinance adopts a new Section 706. And that mandates that either the municipality or the landowner is required to do inspections of the stormwater facilities after they are installed. Under the 2013 ordinance, which is what you currently have, property owners were required to record an agreement that required inspections. But there wasn't really, there was nothing in the ordinance itself that mandated when those inspections had to occur. So, that's really the most substantive change, is this new Section 706. There, because it was an ordinance in amending Chapter 94, we did have to advertise tonight's hearing. We advertised in the Daily Local on September 12th, and we also sent a copy of the ordinance to both the Daily Local and Law Library for public inspection through an email on September 6th. So, we did do the procedural requirements to make sure that this would be lawfully adopted. Happy to answer any questions you have, but again, this is one of these laws that you're sort of mandated and must adopt.
Thank you. Counsel, is there any questions or comments on this? Mr. Flynn.
Ms. Camp, the, since the Commonwealth and the county are mandating us to do stormwater management, and we have adopted the ordinance a while ago, has there been any clarification of whether this is a fee or a tax?
So, this is different than your stream protection fee. So, this is really just applies when developers come in to install additional impervious cover or do earth disturbance on the property. So, this is the engineering part of development. The actual fee that you charge, which is in a different chapter of your code, and that's specific to the amount of impervious cover on your property, that is a different, that is what you consider to be a fee. And that argument was held last week. Michael Gill, my office, attended the oral argument before the Commonwealth, excuse me, the Commonwealth Court. The procedure on that is a motion for summary judgment. Both parties have basically alleged to the court that it's a question of law whether or not your stream protection fee is a fee or a tax. So, at this point in time, the court will, based on the arguments that were rendered as well as the memorandum of law that were submitted, we expect that decision in probably the next six to nine months, and then we'll be able to report back to you what they decide. The court may say that it's not, it's not only a question of law and that there are material facts in dispute, in which case it would have to go through a full hearing process. So, that may be one of the outcomes we'll have to see. But this ordinance doesn't impact at all that particular section of your code.
See, that's why I was confused about the situation, only because we're told that we have to do an Act 167, we're mandated to do an Act 167 by Commonwealth mandate. And then the Commonwealth is coming back and saying that there's a problem with their mandate.
It's different entities in the Commonwealth, however. It's the General Assembly who passes stormwater management law, and it's a, you know, the state system is really the party in the litigation case.
Any other comments or questions? Any comments or questions from the public? Okay. Then I would suggest it is in order to make a motion to accept this.
Mr. Stefano, I make a motion to accept the ordinance as presented by Ms. Camp.
Thank you.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to accept the ordinance without further discussion. Mr. Metrick, would you please call the question?
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vicaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
And Mr. Stefano.
Yes. Motion carries seven zero to accept it. Thank you very much, and thanks, Ms. Camp, for all that. Okay. I'm going to close that public hearing, and I appreciate your indulgence in starting the meeting a little with the regular council meeting first to allow us to introduce our new police officers. So, we're going to go back to our meeting, and we're going to go back to where we left off, which is item number three, which is comments, suggestions, petitions by residents in attendance regarding items that are not on the agenda. Anyone who goes to come, please state your name, come up to the podium, name and address for the record.
Beth Ann Rosica, West Minor Street. First, I'd like to congratulate all the new officers. I'd hope that they would still be here and congratulate and welcome them. My next comment is about the canceling of the Community Outfest. I watched the news report where Mr. Stefano stated that the majority of emails that you received about the event were filled with vitriol and hate. That surprised me as I talked to many parents who wrote emails and were most simply concerned about one aspect of the event. In order to objectively assess the level of hate expressed, this morning I submitted an RTK to review emails sent to and from Borough Council members and the mayor regarding this event. If the emails are as hateful as described, I will propose creating an inclusivity advisory committee to address this issue, and I will volunteer my time to serve. Parents, including myself, were concerned about the over-sexualization of our children. I never asked for the event to be canceled and instead sent a thoughtful, respectful email to offer a suggestion as to how to better handle the situation. Sadly, I received an all-too-typical response basically telling me that I am the problem. If we truly want to work towards unity and inclusion, this is not an appropriate response. You should expect questions and provide meaningful answers, not respond with condescending lectures. I believe that there is a way to hold an event to provide a safe environment for our LGBTQ children and adults without sexualizing the activities. Here in Westchester, Carl Nazib, an NFL player who recently came out as gay, lives here. Let's bring in LGBTQ professionals to help create an environment of unity as opposed to making everything about sex. I thought it might be helpful to read an excerpt, for the sake of time, of my email and the response I received so that our town can better understand that the concerns were raised not about the LGBTQ community members. I'll skip a bunch of it because I don't have enough time. Please know that I'm a supporter of all members of the LGBTQ+ community, and I've been working with children who identify differently from their biological birth gender over the last 30 years of my career. I understand the pain and difficulties these children and adults experience. However, I do not see how a performance of this type helps this group of residents or visitors of our town. I've included a screenshot of one of the performers' social media pages where they identify as a whore. I simply do not see how this activity is appropriate for children under 18. If the Borough wants to host a drag queen event, I would suggest moving it to an inside evening activity for adults only. The response I received was, I appreciate your comments. Drag queens are not inappropriate, and they realize that they are performing at a community event. Comparing their adult content online to how they will perform at a community event geared towards making those who may feel less than seen is not fair. Since you work with children as I do, let me offer you a sign. You can hang around your space to make all of your students who identify as LGBTQ feel safe. That's the end of that. If you are truly seeking unity, let's work together rather than canceling anyone who has a different opinion than yours. Thank you.
Ms. Rosica, can I ask you a question? Do you think comparing people who dress as drag queens to pedophilia and grooming of children is not hate-filled?
I think that drag queens have a performance that they do. And I think that any time that we expose our children to any type of sexuality in that manner, that it's inappropriate. It's just not appropriate. I'm not saying that drag queens are pedophiles. I never used the word pedophilia. I said over-sexualization. I had no issue with any of the other activities that were planned, even though one of the sponsors that I spoke to, they pulled their sponsorship because of the drag queen activity.
So, just so you know, because you're doing your right-to-know request, so you're going to see all the emails I got, there were multiple ones that called having kids see a drag queen as grooming them and making, somehow attaining that to pedophilia.
Yeah.
I think that's disgusting, and that's hate-filled.
And I'm looking forward, and that's why I asked.
And apparently you don't agree with me, because you're not agreeing.
So, I'm not saying that drag queens are encouraging pedophilia. My issue is about the over-sexualization.
I understand what your argument is. I'm telling you, you're asking me and saying that you're surprised that there was hate-filled emails. I'm telling you, that's what I think is hate-filled, and that's what I received, and you'll see that in your right-to-know.
And that's why I requested the emails, because I wanted to make an independent assessment. And if there really are truly people that are that hateful about our LGBT community, then I think that we do need to do something about it. And I am sincere in my efforts to say that let's put together an advisory committee and work together. But honestly, Mr. Stefano, I felt like your response to me was as inappropriate as anything else. You didn't answer my question.
Are you going to hang that sign I gave you? And you're going to hang that in your room, make your people feel safe, feel like you have a safe space?
Make my people feel safe by the way that I conduct myself, by the words that I put.
So, that suggestion offended you?
It didn't offend me. I'm not going to take it, but it didn't offend me.
Okay. Just checking. All right. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item number four, which is comments by the Borough Council and mayor. Thank you. Ms. Vicaro.
I was very disappointed with what happened last night. I was looking forward to the event, and after what happened, I reached out to members of our community who might be interested in putting on a later date event. And it does, the people I am talking to are involved in the drag community, and they are LGBTQ, and they are just people who accept and encourage the differences in our community, and they want to be seen. And there are plenty of children who want to be seen and parents who want their children to feel seen and heard and appreciated. And I today received far more emails in support of a future event than I received from the emails before last night's event, which made me feel positive. I just want to make it clear that for people who are interested in moving forward with an event, there are ways that you can be of assistance and support, and John O'Brien is taking names of volunteers. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Vicaro. Mr. McGinnis.
Thank you. And to further advocate for what Sheila was saying, I agree that, you know, what happened was totally taken out of context, but I'm not surprised because it seems that that is what the culture we're in today, where, you know, you have to tear somebody down or start something or start an issue. But unfortunately, that's the history of our country. You know, we could talk about the Irish, we could talk about the Catholics, we could talk about women's rights, we could talk about, you know, any type of rights in this country, there is always someone to blame. And unfortunately, the people that always talk about freedom and liberty only like it when their freedom and liberty is good for them, but not anybody else's. So, I do think that we could plan this event, make it a bigger and better event, and move forward.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Mr. Flynn.
Greetings from the sweetest ward in the borough, the sixth ward. Is Westchester a nice place to live? Amenities, job opportunities, great schools are part of Westchester's appeal. The historic borough of Westchester is one of the four Pennsylvania cities that landed on the 2021 Top 100 Best Places to Live in America. Wonderful thing that people say about us here. Yesterday wasn't very nice, but we'll work through that. The second thing is that I wanted to congratulate the Westchester Downtown Foundation for their Up on the Roof event this past weekend. It was their 20th event, and it was, the weather was perfect, and everyone had a great time. And Mayor, everybody was looking for you. They're looking for signatures. So, but Up on the Roof was a great, great event, and hopefully the weather will be good for next year. So, we made the top list for where to live. Doesn't mean we don't have problems, don't mean we don't have issues, but people realize that we are special. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Mr. Allen.
Great, thanks. First, I wanted to thank Mr. O'Brien for his work on that event, and I thought what he had to say last night at the meeting was great, and I think that's really just what I want to echo. And I also want to thank Ms. Vicaro for all your emails you sent today. I'm sure that was a lot of time, and I'm sure there were plenty more that I didn't get copied on as well. I was doing the best I could to get back to people today as well. So, thank you. And I do feel less disappointed now that I know the future direction and that we're going to come together as a community and make our values known. I think that's fantastic. And I guess we've all been on our soapbox a little bit today, and I'll get on mine too. Getting a little tired of having tolerance thrown back in my face, and I think there are a lot of views that it's okay to not tolerate. So, I would just encourage everyone to, you know, be true to their views and to their beliefs and fight for what you think is right. And if you get called intolerant, just brush it off and move on because we know we're right. And also, the drag community like rocks. Like, everything I know about them's awesome. So, anyway, congrats to our officers as well. That's fantastic. It's nice to get almost there at our full complement. I don't know if we've ever been there since I've been on council. I think there might have been fleeting moments in time, but I think that's great. And then another more local War II news. I know there's been a lot of interest in John O'Brien Park recently, rightfully so. So, we're going to have a community meeting about that on October 5th at 10:00 a.m. right here, and we're very interested in getting some input about the future of the park, how we can make it function better than it does now. I think what it does is awesome, but me and Mr. Metrick have had a meeting, really a couple meetings, about how we can make it, you know, more functional but also aesthetically nicer to be in. And I think we're close to some really nice stuff. So, I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Metrick, for that. I appreciate that. Yeah, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Allen. Ms. Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Stefano. I'd like to start with echoing Mr. Flynn's recognition of Bid and Westchester Downtown Foundation on Up on the Roof. I too attended. It was a sold-out event. It was very successful. A great time, great people, great food, great drink. That's a great combination right there. Also, I want to call out Parks and Rec for the Restaurant Festival, which I also saw was very well-attended. I too was there, and I think that was a great time. Mr. Krowski did a great job there with the Restaurant Festival. I also want to echo the comments of my co-counsel here on the dais and express my incredible disappointment in the decision that John felt he was forced to make related to the Outfest. And although I understand how hatred and vitriol can get the best of you, I'm disappointed that the decision was to concede and give in to the loudest voices in the room. And for those folks that purport to be welcoming and embracing and diversity and all of those things that they say they do, when it comes right down to it, they don't embrace it. It's not, they don't want it in their backyard. I think a lot of assumptions were made around drag queens versus asking questions. And for the record, I understand the drag queens were going to sing show tunes. That was the extent of their involvement. And it's very unfortunate that we're not exposing our children to people that are different than them and that we are not letting those who are unheard or feel unheard and unseen have the opportunity to be out in front and center. I encourage those of you that we heard from a lot today after it had been canceled, unfortunately. I think if we had gotten those responses prior to the decision to cancel, that maybe we would still be having an Outfest. But for those of you that are in support of it and want to see this happen, I applaud you. I encourage you to reach out to Mr. O'Brien so that we can have a bigger and better event, and I will be pledging my support to ensure that that happens going forward.
Thank you, Ms. Dorsey. Mayor D. Baptiste.
Thank you for that, President Stefano. Well, there's a lot to be pleased about what's going on in Westchester. The first, of course, is that Westchester just sworn in four officers, and I'm very happy about that. It's been a long time coming, and we're moving in the right direction. And I want to say thank you to council for your support of that. Also, to councilperson Flynn's comments, yes, Westchester is one of the most livable places to live, most desirable, and that's welcoming to know and to hear. And thirdly, also, in the list of this past week, the New York Times came out with Best Restaurants in America, and Da Rios was on that list of the New York Times in Westchester. Fortunately, or unfortunately, like all towns, there's room for improvement. And I look forward to Outfest or Pride Fest or whatever fest we call it that recognizes the humanity of the LGBTQTNA community. I look forward to regrouping, to coming back and being supportive so that they felt seen and heard and not diminished. Assumptions are made all the way around, but I look forward to this coming back in a bigger and more fierce way in support of our community because everyone needs to be felt that they are seen, heard, and valued in this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I too went to Up on the Roof. I saw some of my colleagues up here in the dais. It was really nice to see you in a different setting and to chat and to meet some of, you know, some of our families and different people that were there. Me and my wife had a great time. It was a great event. So, thank you to the foundation for putting that on, the Up on the Roof Committee and everybody. It was an awesome night, beautiful weather, too. Thank, congrats to all the people that put on the Restaurant Fest. I did not make it up during the event. I was there when they were setting up, but it was a crazy day with soccer games and whatnot. I just couldn't make it up there. So, I heard nothing but great feedback, and congrats on that. So nice to have that event back in town. Congrats to our new officers getting sworn in tonight. I have a lot of high hopes for them, and I look forward to hearing the great things they're going to do as a member of the force. Fortunately, I have to address this one more time, but I'm going to. As somebody who has family members who are in the LGBT community, one of them is a professional in the community, and as somebody who teaches students who are in that community, I take this personally. And I remember when I was a kid, there was a movie that came out. Do you remember the movie Two Wong Foo, Thanks for Everything, Julie Newmar? Remember that movie? Where it had a couple of big A-list stars coming out, and they dressed in drag. And apparently, it was shocking to me as a child. I'd never seen it before. That was almost 30 years ago. That was almost 30 years ago. It was in 1995. And now we still have women and men and everybody else who emailed me a couple nights ago clutching their pearls because there's going to be somebody dressed in drag. It's ridiculous. It's inappropriate to look at this as anything more than It's inappropriate to look at this as anything more than entertainment, okay, and pride and an event where people can feel like themselves. I'm really disappointed in that. I want to thank John O'Brien, and I want to reiterate that I don't, I understand his reasonings for canceling it or rescinding the permit. I think he did what he thought was best, and I support him on that. I know he went through a rough time and had a hard decision to make. I know he is committed, just like from my, kind of here up on the dais, everybody else up here is committed, to coming back and doing something bigger and better. And I think what this has done is going to create even more events. So, there's people that are really upset to see somebody who's different than you up on a stage or celebrating that. You're probably going to see a lot more of it now. Thank you.
And by the way, sorry, sorry. By the way, I was not up on the roof, but I was down in LA with my, celebrating my granddaughter's 10th-year-old birthday, so.
You were missed.
Yes, yes. So, I wasn't, I wanted to be there, but thanks for missing me then.
We did toast it. We, Lisa, I think we toasted, we may have toasted everybody in the borough, all 20,000 of us.
All right, moving on to our sole discussion item, which is a Borough Manager presentation on the preliminary budget for 2023. Mr. Metrick?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Everybody hear me okay? Okay, good. Thank you. I plan on talking for about 15 or 20 minutes tonight about where we're at with your preliminary budget for next year in 2023, both for capital and operating expenses. But before I get into the nitty-gritty, I just wanted to say how much I appreciate and feel supported by the departmental heads in this process, and in particular, our Director of Finance, who does a really great job of organizing all this information into forms and buckets that help us think about the decisions we have to make and not, and we don't have to worry about where all the numbers go. So, thank you, Barbara. I really appreciate you. So, budgeting is something you might think only happens in the late summer or early fall, but it's a year-round process because budgeting is connected to proper financial management. But what we did this year was we kicked off directed discussions with our department heads around May and June to discuss what service delivery was going to look like in the coming year and what was going to be changing and how they had performed through mid-year. So, this is a point I want to make, that the reporting that we do and the spending and the tracking and all of that that we do in a proper accounting system helps us to budget better. And council's also involved in that process, too, because we report to you on a monthly basis, and you get presentations at your council committee meetings. So, we encourage dialogue between staff and elected officials about things. Ask us questions. What, why is this line overspent? Why are we underspent here? These kinds of things bring things to our attention and help us communicate better to you all, and I want to keep you all well-informed about how we're performing all throughout the year, not just in the moment that I have to stand in front of you because the Home Rule Charter says I have to stand in front of you and present the budget. This is a process we're engaged in all year long. And for the visual learners out there, I put this slide together to tell you how our governmental fund accounting works. In the hexagon, you have your business funds, your, that run our wastewater treatment and our parking, parking department. There are restricted purpose funds. Those are dollars that only can be spent on certain things. Included in there is your recreation fee in lieu, dollars that can only be spent on improvements in your parks, liquid fuels funds, stream protection funds, and the fire fund. I put a heart around the pension because those are fiduciary funds. Those are promises. Those are promises to retired employees and employees currently working for the borough for future payments to aid in funding their retirements. And we make down payments on those obligations through our minimum municipal obligation, which you are, which is an action item on tonight's consent agenda, which is an amount of money we have to put into that fiduciary fund to fund that obligation over a long period of time. But where we're going to spend most of our time talking tonight is in the blue section, talking about general fund, capital fund, and the capital operating reserve. Those are monies available to the borough to use for whatever purposes council deems appropriate in a year. The reason I put a web behind all this is to tell you all of these funds are interconnected. So, there's monies that are transferred between those funds to help fund activity. There's also obligations or IOUs that sometimes occur between those funds that need to be resolved at year's end. This is our basic picture of our system. And a little nitty-gritty here, whenever you look at our financial reports, you're going to see some numbers, and I wanted to explain to you that this is a lot like, who here knows the Dewey Decimal System? Okay, so Dewey Decimal System, all right, great. So, you can go to any library that uses the Dewey Decimal System, and if you go to 331 and nonfiction, you know it's books about finance. 900 is biographies. 650, I think, is gardening. So, you know where I spend my time. The same thing is true with our chart of accounts. So, the first number tells you what fund that account is located in. The second number tells you the department. The third longer number tells you a specific ID as to what kind of expenditure that is. And we try to, we're about 85% aligned with the DCED's chart of accounts. It's a way to normalize accounting platforms and platforms across all municipalities in the Commonwealth. We aren't completely aligned with that, but we're pretty close. So, you could go to any municipality and look up 401, 21. That'll be office supplies, for instance. So, this is a point I want to make because Barbara gets sick of me telling her this, but we have to make sure that our expenditures are going in the right buckets. Think of it as buckets that you're putting the money in as you spend it so you can account for what it really costs for office supplies. Because when we go back at the end of the year, we don't have time to sift through the 40,000 invoices we pay every year. We need it properly accounted for, and we can say, hey, we spend $4,000 on office supplies because we accurately accounted for it. So, that's why the weekly, monthly systems and how we process things is really important to doing this process with you, to talk about the fun stuff and budgeting. So, and budgeting is a predictive activity. You want to, what you're really trying to do is make a prediction about next year, and our process focuses on accuracy over, first of all. I want to be within less than 5%, and I want to be even more targeted with larger line items. When we look through the budget, we give our large items either on the revenue side or our expense side the most attention because everything about my job is about triage. We don't have all the time in the world to think about every little Kleenex and piece of paper we buy. We got to, we got to manage our time. We're here for 40 hours a week. We give, we give our best to the borough, so we need to focus on our large items, give them the most attention, and then our smaller items we give, we give less attention to. So, I want, I want, I want to hit bull's eyes every time I'm talking about large revenue or expense items. That's your EIT, your real estate taxes, and on the expense side, I want to be really close on salaries in the police department, salaries in public works. Those are your, two of your biggest singular line items. So, we spend a lot of time on them. The other thing we do, it's a little trick of the trade, is with expenses, we round up, and on revenue, we round down to the nearest hundred or $1,000, just because it makes the budget look a lot cleaner, and it also bakes in a little bit of, a little bit of a fat, fat, for lack of a better word. The idea, the best budget is one where you put the budget out, and then at the end of next year, your manager comes back to you and says, guess what? We spent 99.8% of all the expenditures in all of our accounts, and we earned 102% of all the revenue accounts. That's great budgeting. We're not there yet. I'm committed to a culture of constant process improvement, so as long as I keep emphasizing to everybody that that's our goal and that's our objective, they'll think of creative ways to better do their day-to-day weekly jobs so that we can get at that, get at that So, as of today, what I'm presenting to you is a draft operating budget, which balances all of the restricted purpose and business-type funds. However, the general fund balance, the general fund budget is out of balance by about a little over 1% or quarter million dollars. So, general fund revenues are $21,587, and expenditures are $21,838. So, there's a, there's a difference there, and we have to close that difference. That's part of the mandate in your code and administrative code and Home Rule Charter to pass a balanced budget. I've been doing, this is my ninth budget I've done. I don't think I've ever had, been able to stand in front of an elected body at this time in the year and say, we're this close. So, I'm really happy about this. I know a quarter million dollars is no joke. That's a lot of money. And I've also had to retrain my mind a little bit working here in Westchester because we work with larger dollar amounts. But we are, to be 1.2% off at this stage in the game makes me feel really good, so I just want to share with you that, that impression. So, we're going to spend some time talking about general funds specifically. We're going to talk a little bit about five-year projections. I'm going to talk a little bit about some ideas for discussion and then what lays ahead for us schedule-wise, and I think I can get that all done in about 10 minutes. These are some slides I presented at last month's Finance Committee meeting, where we looked at where does, you know, where does the money come from, the revenue, to do all the things that we want to do? Well, it's mostly from earned income tax and property tax. So, using my theory of concentrate on the big numbers the most, we spent a lot of time looking at first here taxable, the property tax. What has property tax behaving over a long period of time? How much is the tax base growing? How much is it changing year over year? So, the red line shows you that percentage change year over year, and the blue bar shows you a really healthy, vibrant, long, good run for the community. I've looked at these charts in a lot of different communities, and I don't really ever see this much consistent growth in assessed property value. There's inevitably plateaus, sometimes even dips. This is a combination of new development and any, anybody who is tearing down, rebuilding, or putting on additions. If you put an addition on your home, you will get reassessed, and your property tax will go up. If a tree falls on your house and you put in a new kitchen because of it, your assessment will go up. I know that from personal experience. So, well, the reason we did this exercise was to find out if you didn't change tax rates at all, and your current tax rate is, I think, 7.7 mils. Is that right, Barb? She's the numbers person. How much more revenue would you generate year over year? And it's about $72,000, more or less, if you did nothing to the tax rate. That's just the natural organic growth. That's new developments coming in, and you might see a little bump in that blue bar next year because you have a very large development going in on Rubinstein's. But remember, this is over the entire borough, so even one big, huge development's not going to make that much of a difference. What I want to emphasize with this is that only 2/3 of your borough is taxable property. So, 1/3 of your buildings in this borough, we can't assess a property tax on because they're county or university properties, and you've probably heard that before. We looked again at the EIT, and for comparison's sake, the, although we passed a, the borough passed a increase in the EIT for residents to 1 and 1/4%, the yellow bars there are controlled for 1% EIT, just so we get a comparison of how much is the EIT growing over a longer period of time. And EIT grows at about 4% per year, which yields about $220,000. So, if you're following along, I know, Mr. Flynn, you can do that math, right? We're looking at about $300,000 a year if we do nothing to our tax rates, and that's good. That's a, that's a good chunk of money. However, when we looked at this year's budget, we're going to now talk about some of our major revenue assumptions and some major expense assumptions to explain where, why we got to where we're at with this number. I just, we just told, just told you that we're organically adding 300K a year for the real estate and EIT, but our predictions think we're going to add 560 next year. And that's because we took the extra time and effort to look at these numbers and get them as accurate really as we possibly could, and I'm very financially conservative with other people's money. I'm not this conservative when I go home, like, you know, I'll buy the nicer bottle of wine if I'm wine shopping because, you know, it's a nice thing, nice thing to have. But with other people's money, I'm very conservative, and if you think I'm conservative, you should talk to Barb. So, getting Barb to agree that we were looking at a better-than-average real estate growth in EIT was a little bit of a chore, but we had to do it with data. We looked at the data. We looked at the receipts, and we feel pretty confident that $560,000 is a better number for next year's budget. That doesn't mean every year you're going to see 560. I just think we're recalibrating the way we do our budget this year, and then going into the years, years beyond that, you're probably, again, then back to a 300K per year growth. The other major assumption here is that American Rescue Plan Act fund is fund, in this budget, is funding your entire cash, current cash capital programming to the tune of $808,000. This is a once-in-a-generation kind of influx of cash, no strings attached grant program. We didn't have to apply for it. The money showed up. The money showed up in the account for the borough before we even really knew what we could do with it. Then we spent a long time reading through the guidance from Treasury, and we're going to, next year, I think in the spring, we'll receive the second installment of that funding to the tune, it's slightly more than $1 million next year. So, the total allocation to Westchester Borough is about $2 million. So, we'll have a full accounting of that for you next month as to where we stand, but that's, that's an unusual circumstance, and I want you to keep that in your head because without it, we would be getting a lot more creative with this budget, and we'd look a whole lot different. So, some major expense assumptions, and if you want to follow along with this 11-by-17 sheet I gave you, on this sheet, it looks, this sheet looks at dollar and percentage growth of operating expenditures by department. I just want to point out that the police department typically is growing at close to about $400,000 a year. On average, over the next five years, $428,000 per year. It's adding costs because of, because it's a personnel-heavy department. The personnel earn high salaries, and those salaries are increasing in the current contract between 4 and 4 and 1/4% per year. And when an officer is newly hired, he or she, or they make a much lower salary than an officer who has five years' experience. But as they work and they go from year over year, their bump, so to speak, their raise year over year isn't 4%. There's a, there's a step increase on top of that 4%. So, you're going to see, even though we've enjoyed a decrease in police expenditures this year, you're going to see that kind of flip next year because you're going to have a lot of officers in the force. I don't know what we call them, mayors, step one or two or A or B. I forget what we, what we call it in the contract, but people will be reaching their anniversary date and getting, you know, the raises are somewhere between 8 and 12% year over year. So, you're going to see some of that filter in, back, coming back at you, but for now, for this year, police department costs are really well-controlled. We expected pension MMO payments to go down by 5% year over year, but if you recall, last year, council changed some of its assumptions regarding the pension plan. So, those worked into the MMO calculations, and that's why you're seeing a slight increase in your MMO this year. It's not a lot. The number for you here in just a second. You're seeing an increase of about $70,000 between the non-uniform and police pension plans in your MMOs for this year, when in fact, we were hoping for like about an $80,000 reduction. So, that's $150,000 swing away from expectations. And lastly, the administrative group, which includes my team, finance, sustainability, IT, parks, building, and housing, is adding $250,000 of cost year over year where the five-year predictive average is 98. There's a couple of reasons for that. I can go into in more detail for you if you have questions. Chief among them is that we are making a contribution that's accounted for in this administrative group to the Stream Protection Fund for fees associated with borough-owned property. So, until now, we hadn't done that. So, we are making payments to the Stream Protection Fund for the, for the impermeable cover the borough generates to the Stream, making that payment from the general to the Stream Protection Fund. And that's, that's the tune, to the tune of about $60,000. There's also a few other things we need to correct. I think we got to look really hard, getting ahead of myself, but we got to look hard at some of our insurance numbers in the budget as well. Utility costs are increasing across the whole enterprise, especially in electric-heavy departments like wastewater. You're getting a 50% increase because the generation costs are going from, Bill knows the number, but I think it's in the range of 4 cents per kilowatt hour is what we enjoy today and we're going up to maybe 7 or 8 kilowatt, cents per kilowatt hour, just in a year. And generation makes up about 1/3 of your electric bill. And also, there are pay raises baked into this budget for not, for, for the contract employees, because it's contracted. And there is a pay raise of 3% a pool generated in this budget for your non-contract employees. Pause a little bit, see if there's any questions at this point in time, because we're going to talk a little bit more about general fund and where we're headed. Seeing none, I'll go ahead. All right. I think this pie chart's important because it tells you where your dollars are going. So, more than, a little more than half of your dollars are going towards current police costs and police pension costs. Your public works and administrative groups are roughly 1/5 of your budget and then the other 5 is made up of your debt, contribution to the fire company and others, and the non-uniform pension. I think it's good for council to know the shape and sizes of the pieces of the pie, but I'm more concerned with the pie. And so, when we talk about controlling costs, I want to see what all of these pieces of the pie can do to control costs, not just, not just police, but the administrative group as well as public works. So, referring to our, you know, attached spreadsheet, this is a ruler that we've applied to, I think will be really helpful for us going forward as we work together, based upon assumptions that we know for wage increases and inflation. We know that we're going to be adding probably, if we change nothing about operations, nothing about what we're doing, adding somewhere between $640,000 to $750,000 a year in costs. That's just, unless we shrink the operations, that's what we're, that's what we're looking at. So, that's about a 2.3, 2.5 cost, rising at 575, 770 per year, where we're only organically generating 300K per year in new revenues from our two major items. So, we have to get really creative. We got to look at all the other revenue items, but there's something fundamentally imbalanced about our operations that you got to be aware of because I think we have to accept the fact that small, measured increases in, in tax rates are good fiscal management. I'm not suggesting where this is in store for us this turn of the calendar year in this budget cycle, but there's no way we can keep running this race without doing something about our rates. At some point, we got to do something and Nick and I were talking about what would be the financial impact of adding a quarter to parking revenue. It's about a half a million dollars, but you can't keep adding a quarter to the parking revenue. Pretty soon, pretty, there's some breaking point somewhere, right? So, we're not at a decision to make up, we're not at a point where we can make that proposal to council tonight or this year, but we're looking at that as one, one thing we can do to help raise more revenue to cover these costs. So, looking at the capital plan and budget, we still have a little more work to do, but I want you to hopefully appreciate what we're trying to accomplish. And that is a predictable allocation for all capital programming from your general, you know, fund sources, restricted and business revenues. I want capital planning and programming to be as smooth as a line as possible. When I got here, the borough was spending, doing its capital programming with current year cash. And if you keep doing that, there's going to be years where you're just blowing up because some years, you got to buy the car, right? Or some years, you got to put a roof on your house. With capital programming, you want to stretch it out as much as possible, take the bumps and the, the peaks and the troughs out of that allocation year over year so that we can say to you, "We think that these general fund-funded departments, their annual allocation is, we'll call it a million dollars. We can budget for that. Some years, we might spend a little bit more. Some years, we might spend a little bit less, but at least we get some more predictive, predictive ability in our budgeting that way." So, we still have some work to do with this five-year plan because we need to look ahead for administrative group, which covers, which I'm using to mean also all of our streetscape improvements in town. So, we're not just talking about building improvements and buying new software and things like that, but things that people are actually going to use out, out in your, out in the community. So, getting close to the end of what I want to talk about tonight, if we were to raise $250,000 solely through property tax hike, we'd have to raise it 0.3 mils, which is about what council has done the last two years, or about 4%. But there's other solutions we should explore before I'm going to suggest you do that. One of them is to look at our capital operating reserve fund, not to dip into it, but to use the interest and dividends that are coming out of that fund on an annual basis to fund general fund activity. So, we can map that out for you. We have roughly, Barbara has the exact numbers, but roughly $8 million in the bank. The interest rate environment's improved markedly over the last 12 months. We should be making better money on that, better returns on that. And we're going to look at that.
What's that current interest rate? The current interest rate on the money in the bank?
It's not in any one bank, so.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
... spreadsheet together and I mapped it out over the past six years. And we currently have an average interest rate earning of about 2.86% over the last six years, but we are earning a little bit more through 831. It's closer to 4%.
You made me, you're not going to adjust the microphone? Another thing is there is allocations to the, OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. And that, these are down payments we're making on obligations to retired officers to pay medical benefits, but we currently pay for those medical benefits with current cash. Right now, the OPEB fund, which I don't have the exact number, Barbara probably does, has six fig, go ahead.
So, we currently have about $1.4 million in our OPEB fund, which is not a trust. It's an actual cash account that we have sitting in Pliggett, which is a Pennsylvania local investment trust fund.
So, Barb, do we, or Sean, doesn't matter, but do we, that, that money sits in the account and we keep adding to it, but we're not using that money to pay for our obligations?
Not currently. So, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
Is it there, is it the reason we're not, maybe just, you know, in case we get a spike and we have to use a lot? Is that the purpose of just letting it sit there?
I'm not sure what the purpose is.
And how much is that earning?
About less than 1%. I don't have an actual figure on that, but I can get back to you on that. Yep.
So, I think, Mr. McGinnis raises a good point. So, what, what can, what can that money earn? Can we start thinking of that money that we, the borough has put aside smartly the last several years? Can that money start yielding some revenue? What's, what's a reasonable amount of revenue per year for that OPEB to yield to help us out with our insurance costs for retired officers? Can we put that money to work today? Third thing is, these one, cut spending. And we're already going to look at our revenue and expense accounts real hard in the next four weeks to look at possibilities there. And this is more, the last one is more of a note for next year. Back to the earlier slide, about $800,000 from American Rescue Plan Act. That, that money is going to dry up real soon, probably in the next budget cycle. So, we got to, we got to be on our game if we want to fund our capital program and we have to find appropriate grants, apply for them. You don't get all the grants you apply for and you don't get all the money you think you're going to get. You get turned down. It's like trying to apply for a job. You get turned down more than you, more than you get accepted. So, those are some of our ideas at this point for discussion. Pending tasks and schedule are all I have left to talk about. We're going to review in detail all of our expense and revenue accounts one more time through the department cycle in the next four weeks. We'll come back with you, with a, call it a final preliminary budget for you to possibly consider scheduling a public hearing at the October meeting. Our workers' comp, general liability auto assurance is currently in process. We're taking that to market for renewal. So, we'll know those rates between now and when we get back together again. And we should hopefully be wrapping up contract negotiations with the AFSMI Union, which covers your public works dispatch parking employees. So, then we can plug those, those figures into your budget and we can be more accurate about things like public works salaries and wages. So, this is the schedule. We are going to talk about budget on all of our committees next month at the work session. We will do a shorter presentation and just clue you into what's changed, what's been, what's come together. Hopefully, we'll have good news on bridging that gap that exists right now. And we would, for council's consideration, a motion to advertise and schedule a hearing for the budget, which could take place in November. And then we could have that hearing and it would be eligible for adoption at the November Business Meeting. If there's cause to add a month into this process, you can, but we'll need to make that decision next month whether we want to take it to December or not. So, thank you all for your patience and listening to, to, to me. Are there any questions about our budget to date?
Mr. Allen?
Yeah, it's not as much of a question, but I just wanted to thank you for the work that, you know, we've gotten to do on this and everything you've done with the departments has been, I think, really great. I just wanted to point out that I really appreciate the way that you look at the big picture. The five-year projections from each department have been invaluable and they really, you know, helped me get a sense of what's going on. And I think a new way of, you know, thinking about finances through organic growth has been something that's really helped me grapple with some of the numbers over the past few weeks as well. So, I think that's, that's huge. I think that's awesome. So, I appreciate that. And then there's small details as well that I'm really excited to see changing. One that sticks out to me is in Mr. Mann's presentation, just something as small as changing that Barracuda line item, just to be like a catch-all for, I forget what it's called now, but, okay. But I think that's great because it's, you know, what if we switch, right? What if we, I don't think we're going to, but just in the future, what if we do, we don't have to go in and change our budget, other than the number that's in there based on those projections? And I really appreciate that it's becoming so standardized because I think that contributes to readability and transparency. I know that's something, as I started on council, I had a really hard time with, was understanding exactly what it was I was looking at. So, I think we're doing a really good job moving in that direction. So, I appreciate that as well. And then I think like the last thing I want to say is what I spend my time thinking about now is that gap in organic growth and how we're seeing basically a systemic issue that we need to fix. And there's something like we, like really need to get after and solve, and that's something that I've been really interested in is not, you know, coming up with a fix that looks good for our terms, but coming up with a fix that looks good for the rest of the time we live here. And as we do that, I was actually just looking this up, but when I started my term on council, Pennsylvania was the second-most regrettably taxed state in the country. So, what that looks like is the lower your income, the more, basically the higher your effective tax rate. So, we're number seven now. I just looked that up, which is good. So, we're moving in the correct direction. So, basically, if you're in the bottom 20% in Pennsylvania right now, your effective tax rate is more than double the top 10%. And that's something that, you know, as we're making our decisions, I want us to keep in mind. Joining council, I was very naive to all of the just state-level restrictions we have around our ability to generate revenue. I was hoping we could look at some options that are not on the table, just to help with some of these issues, but I would just encourage us to look into that and keep that in mind as we try to, you know, hopefully fix this problem that, you know, if we, if we do a good job, we'll be good for decades. So, it'd be great. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Allen. I, just to jump off of what Nick was saying, I think the, the one that stood out to me, I think you said about looking ahead and not just in our terms in this year, but looking ahead more past our terms is really important. I think, Sean, I think you have a good vision for that and I appreciate that. Couple of the things that popped out was investing grant procurement for capital programming. Like you said, we have essentially a lifeline right now with the improvement money from the federal government. It'd be really nice to like not just rest on that and say, "This isn't going to be here much longer. We've got another year of it. Let's look ahead." And I think that's really smart to look at those grant programs because there's money out there that we can, that can help us improve those capital projects going forward. So, thank you for your work, Barb. Thank you for your work, of course. Any other questions? Mr. Flynn?
Good evening. To quote a great philosopher, Kyle Hudson, "Small increases in taxes are acceptable." What a great philosopher we have, and it's good to see him this evening. The, a couple of things, as I glanced through the, I didn't look through the, the line items, but the $140,000 request from Good Fellowship Ambulance Company, I, it could be in the details, but I didn't see it in the big picture. Did we account for that?
Yeah, you'd find that in the admin under Department 90.
Okay, very good. Under, in 2024, I see that we're having a gigantic jump in parks for $440,000. Is there something that we're not attuned to, what's going to happen specifically for that 440?
Yeah, there. Will, could you handle that question? Because there's something in that, there's something in the five-year plan and I'm not recalling what exactly it was. Apologize. It's a large, it's a, it's a hoops park project. Yeah. And I think when we, when we get those big fish in a capital program and plan, one of the things Bill and I have been talking about is find a partnership, find funding partnerships for the big fish. So, if we can't produce a funding partnership for something that costs $400,000 by the time it's due to be done in your five-year plan, there's no harm in pushing it out another year until we find that funding partnership to make it happen.
Yeah, thank you. The year-end carryover, I know that, you know, as we go through year after year, we had to borrow money, pay $50,000 of interest a couple of years ago and we borrowed from ourself and we paid it back in June. Do we have something incrementally built in the back end of this budget that we could get closer to that $3 million that we need to carry over?
That's a really good question. It's been on my mind. It's a cash flow issue. Do you want to tackle that one?
So, in this current budget, we do not have anything for any projects that are not completed, any of the capital projects that won't be completed in 2021. completed, any of the capital projects that won't be completed in 2021. Typically, we would have a reserve for cash that we would need to, to move forward to the next budget, but to answer your question, there is nothing built into this budget right now for any sort of moving forward of any cash balances.
So our plan, again, at the end of the year, would be to have to borrow from ourselves if we don't have $3 million in the kitty to take us into 2023.
Yeah, we did that this year, because typically our real estate taxes don't come in until the end of March, the beginning of April, so we did ask a request to make that transfer from the capital operating reserve, just to kind of get through the first three months of the year.
But maybe I'm not asking the question correctly. Mr. Metric mentioned, as we move forward with the five-year plan, that he was hoping to start building a, a pot of money at the back, the back end somewhere, so that we had cash to go into the previous years. The last two sessions didn't turn out very well, at least we, you know, we borrowed from ourselves. So, you know, I would, I would suggest looking at some kind of a line item, e- even if it's $500,000, to, to put into the line item somewhere, that we know that we could carry something over, you know, for, for the balance of the year. It's just, it's a thought. The OPEB and the capital reserve, are we mandated to make sure that they're in very low, very conservative investments? We're mandated not to put them in a volatile position for ebbs and flows, correct?
So typically, when you have an OPEB fund, when you follow the, the accounting guidelines, they should be set up in a trust. Our OPEB funds are not set up in a trust, they're set up in a liquid cash account through Pliggett, so that if there is a need to, you know, get to that money, we can get to that money relatively quickly. And the thought was to keep it in Pliggett, because it is, it's a safe account to keep it in.
All right. And lastly, the, the grant writing, Mr. Stefano mentioned it, and Mr. Metric mentioned for partnerships. Do we have a plan for an intern, maybe from the university, that could sit down and go through state grant writings to try to get us some money on the backside? Mr. O'Brien mentioned that there's a lot of money in Harrisburg, waiting for somebody to apply for a grant, when I talked to him about that kind of stuff, because that's what he did previous to this, and it's just a thought.
I hope you're going to like my answer to that question. I think we have the skills, talent, and people in-house to do that ourselves with no extra cost.
Mr. Jingles likes the praise. It's the fact that we have to make sure we continue to do it, though.
Mr. McCoy?
I think just to get on to the point again about the grants, is there a general sort of KPI that municipalities have for grants as a percent of, I don't know, total budget or whatever?
KBI?
Yeah, key performance indicator. So, you know, it might be, you know, 0.05% of the total budget. Just curious whether, you know, maybe the cog group, for instance, there's a standard measure of what's typical, what a successful, you know, well-run municipalities, what, what is a typical grant revenue?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I don't know, but that's a great question. Work on that.
Any other comments, questions? There, yeah, go.
I had a question about the grants as well. So we don't have a specific person in the past that's written the grants, so it, so now you're just going to try to choose someone in-house to do this?
It'll be a team.
A team effort?
Mm-hmm. And I would love some, I would love cooperation on that, I'm sure you would, with the police department, to, to write grants for capital programming and things like that. Absolutely. Love to, for them to be part of the team.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yeah, so Sean, you, you mentioned here about, you know, the solutions, and, you know, I would like to see you and Barb, and hopefully the finance committee, hopefully we could come up with more solutions. Do we know when the last time that the parking garage, when has that changed as far as the increase? When was the last increase in parking from the parking garages?
I could research that for you.
Right, I mean, because I think that's an easy solution. By my estimates here, the capital reserve, 4%, 8 million, that's $320,000 a year in the dividend, that solves a tax increase, and potentially moving forward. I'm not saying that that is the end-all, be-all, but, you know, I think we do have to take that into consideration, you know, all options on the table, including cuts. I mean, we can't always get what we want. You know, people out there, inflation, you know, is 8.26%, right? You know, I mean, people are going to have, you know, there's still a lot of people out there hurting, and I think that we need to be cognizant of that moving forward, especially our seniors. So, you know, I, hopefully, I'd love to sit down with, with Nick and Bernie, and hopefully we could brainstorm some ideas to get more revenue moving on without affecting taxpayers.
Just, just as a follow-up, the, Eric Largas mentioned when he was running for mayor about getting higher interest rates for the capital reserve. The, the people that actually are running our pension board now, they're probably some of the smartest minds in the borough. Would not be a bad idea to collaborate with them to come up with what we could do safely to, to get a bigger bang for our buck. I like Mr. McGinnis's 4%, you know, and see if we can't get 6. So, thank you.
Well, I won't do anything unilaterally, because we have an investment policy in place for that fund, so that would be something I would want councils by.
And I don't, I don't believe by law we can invest that. I don't believe we could put that in anything that has a fluctuating share price, I believe. Is that correct?
I'd have to look at the.
I mean, I would recommend against it.
Solicitors here, but there are rules about.
Right, exactly, in the percentages, I believe, right.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Is there any comments from the public here? Okay, well, thank you for your work, and we'll look forward to seeing next month what we, what the changes are. All right, moving on to our consent, you know, consent agenda is item number six. Here it is.
Make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
Comment about what? You can make that comment now. Motion's been made and seconded to accept the consent.
Beth Rosica, 338 West Minor. I wanted to bring to council's attention that number 6E, the approval of the parking rate increase to 75 per month, in the contract that's attached, it actually says $60 a month. So I wasn't sure what the discrepancy was with that.
That, that is what it currently is, and it's being raised to 75.
Oh, okay, so there'll be a new contract.
That was confusing, but that's what that is.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, any other questions or discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, Mr. Metric, I believe, can call a question, please.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vicaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey? Mr. Stefano?
Yes, motion, carry 7-0 to approve the consent agenda. It's going to bring us on to our final item, which is other business. There is one item on there that we are, to announce the, that, Brooke, we will be meeting an executive session directly following this meeting to discuss legal and personnel issues.
Mr. Stefano, I have one point of interest.
Mr. Flynn?
Last night, we talked about adding a, an additional holiday to our parking scenario, and we talked about Juneteenth Day. Mr. McGinnis brought up Juneteenth Day adding that to the holiday. What we have to take into consideration is we have contracts with police and ASME, and that has to be negotiated in to their contract if we're going to give them days off. Also, if, if it's going to be another paid holiday for people inside of the borough, because it's a federal holiday, you know, not a Commonwealth holiday. My thought.
I would like to clarify that the holiday in that ordinance is free parking, so it doesn't affect, it's not a holiday for the employees unless we make it a holiday for the employees, just like you said.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was confused from last night, and I.
Question, good, good point.
And I thought about it on the 18th holiday, so.
Any other business? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.